Calling me into order, being about 7:02. Rule call, please.
Mayor Basmas.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Talantino.
Here.
Okay, we're all here, thank you. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Just a housekeeping item, those were cell phones. If you would please put them on vibrate or turn them off, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Also at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Longtime city employee, Jerry Van Louwen passed away this past weekend. Twenty-two years employed by the City of Sioux-Saint Marie. Certainly our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, Jerry, and his friends. Thank you. At this time, item number B, Proclamations and Recognitions. Proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Sioux-Saint Marie. Understand Jessica Miles is here also from the Diane Pepler Center. Jessica, if you'd like to meet me up at the podium, I'd appreciate it. I'll read this proclamation. I'll present it to Jessica, and if you'd like to say a few words, we have it, have you do that. "City of Sioux-Saint Marie, proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all ages, races, gender, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 10 million Americans each year, and whereas one in three Americans has witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation an average $10 billion annually in medical expenses, policing court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. And therefore, it be resolved that I, Anthony G. Basmas, Mayor of the City of Sioux-Saint Marie, Michigan, proclaims the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges the citizens of Sioux-Saint Marie to work together with Diane Pepler Resource Center to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the city of the City of Sioux-Saint Marie to be fixed this first day of October 2018." Anthony G. Basmas, Mayor. Jessica?
Domestic Violence Awareness Month started October of 1981 as a day of unity to mourn those who have died because of domestic violence, celebrating those who have survived and connecting those who work to end violence. Domestic violence has been seen mostly as a family issue, but these types of violence affects the community as a whole. Statistics shows that victims lose eight million days of paid work per year in the U.S. alone. This is equivalent to 32,000 full-time jobs, so imagine the workforce of the city we would have if we all prevented domestic violence. We appreciate the continued support from the City Commission, Mayor Basmas, and all the business owners who support us in our endeavors. We, as a community, have the opportunity to make our city safer for everyone. October is also Breast Cancer Awareness. Statistics show that one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, which is unpreventable, but if one in three women will be a domestic violence survivor, which is 100 percent preventable. Prevention is something that everyone can do and is needed to minimize the violence. As an upstander, everyone can take part in preventing violence by speaking out against domestic violence and participating in events in the community. Abusers thrive in a community that continues to have the mentality of it's a family issue and not talking about it. This train of thought allows perpetrators to maintain power and control over their victims. So please join us on October 8th for the annual Domestic Violence Awareness Walk hosted by the Sioux Tribe, Chippewa Indians Advocacy Resource Center, and the Diane Pepler Resource Center. Participating in this walk is an easy way to be an upstander. Also, we will be celebrating our 40th anniversary with a gala, so save the date for September 21st, 2019, at the Coating Casino. And I just want us to all, so let's just show the state and the country that we are committed to being the safest city through our actions, because we all know that actions speak louder than words. The walk is going to be held at the Big Bear Arena. Registration starts at 5:00 PM and the walk begins at 6:00. Will end at 8:00. There'll be a free pizza dinner, and the first 300 participants receive a free long-sleeve t-shirt.
Okay, thank you, Jessica, and certainly thank Diane Pepler Resource Center for the work that they do in our community. Item number C, Public Comment. This time, anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item may let us know at this point so that when they get to that item, you'll be given an opportunity by your name. Thank you. If you could tell us your name, Joan.
Joan Jorgensen.
Joan Jorgensen. Anyone else? Mark, I think you're already on.
Okay.
Yes.
Stephanie. Stephanie, Michael Register.
And your name, please.
Glenn.
Okay. Anyone else? Please.
Hi, Debbie Jones.
Debbie Jones, and what item?
I have this issue.
Okay. Let me write that down. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Sierra. I have this issue.
Could you speak up? Your name?
Sierra.
Sierra. Okay. You have that wrong? Okay, thank you. Item D, the Consent Agenda. Assistant City Clerk, please. The City Manager, please.
Item D, Consent Agenda. One, approval of the City Commission meeting minutes of September 17th, 2018. Item two, acceptance of the Ethics and Conduct Board meeting minutes of September 24th, 2018. Item three, acceptance of the Police and Fire Pension Board meeting minutes of May 16th, 2018. Item four, acceptance of the Police-Fire Pension Board meeting minutes of June 27th, 2018. Item five, acceptance of the Police and Fire Pension Board meeting minutes of July 25th, 2018. Item six is to reappoint Carl Hansen to the Construction Board of Appeals for a term to expire June 30, 2022. Item seven is reappoint Terry Monte to the Construction Board of Appeals for a term to expire on June 30th, 2023. Item eight is to reappoint Randy Suggit to the Construction Board of Appeals for a term to expire on June 30, 2022. Item nine is to appoint Dr. Terry Hines, Darianne Nevoo, and James Schaefer to the Fire Code Board of Appeals. Item 10 is authorization of a shared maintenance agreement with LSSU on Alfred Park improvements. Item 11 is from the Downtown Development Authority, authorization to enter into an agreement with Kalia Properties LLC related to the CDBG rental rehabilitation grant. Item 12 is from the Sioux-Saint Marie Housing Commission, audit submission, and public housing scores. And item 13 is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, in discussion with the City Attorney, Commissioners Baker and Torri are not able to vote on that item, so we will pull item D2 off of the agenda, and that'll be our first item going forward after the consent agenda. Anyone else have comment or question on the consent agenda? Commissioner Torri.
I so move that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Mayor Basmas.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Torri.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. First item after that would be the item D2, Acceptance of the Ethics and Conduct Board Meeting Minutes of September 24th, 2018. Anyone have any questions on that? Motion, Commissioner Talantino.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the Ethics Conduct Board meeting minutes for September 24th, 2018.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Mayor Basmas.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Mayor Basmas.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Item E, Special Orders of Business. One, public hearing on confirmation of special assessment role for West 8th Avenue Reconstruction Project, ST-02-18.
Okay, thank you. Before we go, and because of transparency, I'd like to just state that my daughter has in-laws living on that street, and I guess City Attorney, is that something that I can participate in?
Yes, you must vote.
Okay, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, City Engineer Basista will present to the City Commission.
Good evening, Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. At the August 6th meeting, you passed the first resolution ordering the improvement of West 8th Avenue Reconstruction Project between Ryan and Meridian. Subsequently, we completed, the Engineering Department completed the plans and specifications for the project and put the project out to bid. The next step in the special assessment process, which also, the resolution ordering the project also stated that the cost of the project would also be shared by the benefiting property owners. So therefore, the next step was upon receipt of bids, the Engineering Department did complete the special assessment proposed role. The role consists of property owners paying for the actual cost of replacing their driveway culverts, the $17 per front footage for the road reconstruction, and driveway approaches that did not have, meet the requirement of having asphalt or hard-surface drive approach are also paying for the paving of the drive approach upon completion of the installation of the driveway culverts. The proposed special assessment is to be paid, would be paid in 10 annual installments with a 6 percent interest rate as set using the recently adopted city policy of using the current federal prime rate plus 1 percent, and the current federal prime rate is 5 percent. So it sets the special assessment for annual installments, the interest rate at 6 percent. The total amount of special assessments to be collected on the project is $25,841, and this is less than 5 percent of the total construction cost of the project, being that almost half or more of the length of West 8th Avenue is fronted by city-owned property Malcolm Park. So tonight, I would ask you to hold a public hearing to hear comments regarding special assessment role ST-02-18, and then upon the public hearing, adopt a resolution confirming the special assessment role.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, you have anything addition?
Nothing further. Thank you for that presentation, City Engineer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we hold a public hearing on the confirmation of special assessment role for West 8th Avenue Reconstruction, ST-02-18. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. City Commission, Commissioner Baker.
Motion to adopt the resolution confirming special assessment role ST-02-18.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Torri.
Yes.
Mayor Basmas.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item F, Communications. One, from the Ethics and Conduct Board, determination of code of ethics and conduct complaint.
Okay, thank you. This is something that we haven't ever done before, so we have a couple of rules that I like to institute, and I want to share them with you, and then we'll have the City Attorney speak about the process, and then we'll go forward. The, a couple of things, I ask everyone to be respectful, to be quiet, there will be no clapping, there'll be no talking in the audience. If I think it's enough that it gets to be more than we should have, I'll ask you to leave, and you can be escorted by, we have a number of police, I hope we don't get to that, and I think we should all be civil and courteous and say what you have to say if need be, and then please be seated. We appreciate the people, you know, taking the time to be here tonight, certainly in the process, but I would ask now the City Attorney, at least, to talk about the process.
Initially, in the process, first thing that you should do as the City Commission is review the filed ethics complaint. I believe that was, closer, I'm going to swallow it. First thing you should do is review the filed ethics complaint. It's in your file. If any Commissioner has not had an opportunity to review the ethics complaint contained in your file, let us know, and you can take time to do that.
I'm going to go through the process.
I want to see if everyone reviewed it.
Anyone needs time to review the, Commissioner Miller?
I do.
Okay. How long would you like?
Couple minutes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Second step is the Commission shall ask the accused, which is Commissioner Baker in this situation, if they wish to present evidence of a defense to the complaint at this meeting in which the complaint has been introduced. The accused may introduce evidence either through her own mouth or by counsel, and the Commission may ask questions.
Mark come up.
Okay.
To talk for me.
Mark?
Good evening, Commissioner.
Your Honor. Excuse me? Oh.
I have a question on, I guess, a point of order, and I don't feel that's the way the actual policy reads. I guess we wouldn't call it presenting evidence, because then the other party should have the opportunity to present evidence as well.
They will have after Commissioner Baker.
If we actually go to a hearing.
Excuse me. When Mr. Dovias is done, then Mr. Jorgensen will have an opportunity.
This is the way it reads to me.
Well, there's another step before two A. Because that's why we have people out there in the audience, and they'll get a chance to speak. And we won't have the opinion, we won't go to a, by the Commission at all until we're through with the individuals.
I don't see that as how the actual policy reads, in my opinion. It said if there was insufficient evidence to conclude that any particular violation has occurred in this case, the Board shall keep an air confidential. The Board concludes it's more likely than not there's been a violation, in which case the Board may call for a full review by the City Commission. And I guess the next paragraph reads if the Board, which would be the Ethics Board, concludes there may have been a violation, the City Commission shall classify the possible violation as major or minor. If it is minor, then it shall administer a censure. If it's major, then it goes to a public hearing, which I think would be what we're close to listening to here.
All I can say, Commissioner, is that I've chosen to go, which way the City Attorney, who deals in the courts, he's recommending that we do this process, and that's the way I'm moving. If you wanted to make a different motion, this is your opportunity.
Last question.
Not yet.
I'll defer to Commissioner Collins at this point.
Commissioner Collins.
So the steps in the process in the Ethics Board referral that we got in our packet, that's actually the steps in the process, or that's steps that you're interpreting is the process?
City Attorney?
Those steps I provided as guidance to the Commission for the purposes of reviewing the complaint and complying with the requirements of the ordinance and providing the accused with due process of law.
What's that for?
So if the, I guess defendant in this case gives enough evidence at this point, then Mr. Jorgensen also has an opportunity to talk at that point as well?
Sure.
And then if, what happens then? Do we then say it goes to a special meeting? I mean, do we, because I think there's a lot of stuff that needs to be, in my opinion, there's a lot of steps that should probably be investigated if we decide to go down the process. Does that make sense? There's a lot of basically meat here.
Before we get to Mark, maybe we ought to go down through the process, and then we'll come back.
Well, I hate to go all the way through the whole process, because each step in the process has a determination which directs what the next step in the process is.
Okay, let me ask you this. When the people here have a chance to speak after Commissioner Baker, after Mr. Jorgensen or his representative, and the people that wanted to speak, then the Commission will have a chance to make an motion.
The Commission then will be faced with the question of whether the complaint is insufficient to allege an ethics violation. If the Commission votes that the complaint is insufficient based on the information they received here tonight, then the complaint will be, then no action will be taken on the complaint. So that's the first step. Hear what the complaint is, hear the response to the complaint, and begin the process of determining whether it's sufficient or insufficient. If you, if a motion is made that it is sufficient, and if that motion passes, then we move on to additional steps.
And those will be explained. Okay.
I guess that was my question, what's the additional step? Like, what happens then?
Those will be, those will be explained if you get to that point. And they're in there, and they're in the packet.
Well, I read them in here, I just want to make sure it's what actually is in.
Yeah, other than the one that allows the person that made the complaint to continue why they have additional information or would like to speak.
I got you.
Okay.
Yeah, got it, got it.
Commissioner Gary.
I just, I don't know if the people that were accusing her of that knew that we would have counsel at this meeting tonight to represent each other, so I wonder if they were prepared with this as well.
Annoying.
I think we're accelerating in a step. This seems to be when we go to a hearing, then we have counsel, we can call witnesses, so on, so forth. That seems to be the next step.
These are not witnesses.
We have counsel.
We have a representative, representing Abby, as her counsel.
Didn't you say inside your thing, can I say something? I think inside here it says that the initial phase, that the defendant can either speak for themselves or have somebody else speak for them, in the first step there.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not an attorney, but that's the interpretation, that is not what our charter says.
Mr. Canelo wrote the charter, he's the one that I am following going forward. If you would like to change that, then bring a motion forward, otherwise, we're going Commissioner Torri, do you have something to say? No, you, excuse me, you cannot say anything.
I got one more.
Okay.
So I guess this is to our City Attorney?
Yes.
Is it admissible for an attorney to be present and speaking on behalf of a Commissioner at this meeting?
Any individual appearing before the City Commission may appear by counsel.
I believe I read somewhere that do we not have to put out an eight-day notice on any type of public hearing?
That's a later step if you determine the complaint is sufficient. And it's a 10-day notice.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on. Commissioner Dovias? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, just a minute. Commissioner Gary.
Could we ask the Jorgensons if they were prepared, or if they were under the understanding that this would be the process? Would that be a fair thing to do, or are we?
I don't know if it's a fair thing to do, but if an individual wants to be represented by counsel, they can have that. The individual didn't think to ask, I'm not going to ask it at this point, they'll have an opportunity if it goes far enough.
I didn't even understand that it was possible in reading our Ethics and Conduct policy, it wasn't clearly stated, so I guess I don't know how they would understand that as well, but can we ask if they are ready to?
I think Mr. Dovias has a floor. When it's their turn, they can say whatever they want.
Well, I'd like to make some comments before we.
Sure.
Get on with this cruise here.
Don't, excuse me, if Mr. Gary is, are you going to make a motion, or we're going to, and I, like I said, I've not done this before, but it's going to be civil. If they chose not to be represented by, I don't know, but anyone can be represented, according to our City Attorney, he's the one that wrote the ordinance, it was in the information. If you wanted, the accused wanted to be represented by the counsel, she could have it, or he could have it, but do you have anything else?
I don't.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much. Mr. Dovias.
Well, I have some comments before we get into the meat of the coconut, as they say. I did some research on ethics ordinances, and I'm quite concerned about the ethics ordinance here. Some of the sources I looked at, the Ethics Handbook for Michigan
And some of the sources I looked at, the Ethics Handbook for Michigan municipalities, this was promulgated by the Michigan Municipal League. Very detailed, also sets forth model ethics ordinances. I also found in my research here a models, a model ethnic or ethics ordinance. This is an older one for local units of government, and this is been written by Attorney General Mike Cox, so that's been at least two cycles ago. I haven't seen this updated. But it's important to look at these ordinances before we proceed. There's another issue here with the ordinance in these model ordinances, and they have a model ethics complaint form. This is promulgated by the Attorney General's Office, and they have on the body of it the complainant, the address, the telephone, the public officer employee subject to complaint, the public position held, and the alleged dates of the violation, and a description of the conduct. And then what's important is there's a notary block at the bottom of this. Why is a notary block important? Because it means that it's sworn under oath, that a person has personal knowledge of the facts and circumstances that exist. We don't have that in this particular ordinance. Anybody can make a complaint on behalf of everybody else. There's hearsay involved. Hearsay, as we know, for the most part, is not dependable. You have to be subject to cross-examination. That's not going to happen here. This is a serious affair. All right? So structurally, I have some questions about the ordinance as written. I also did some further research on ordinances throughout the state. Michigan Municipal League provided them. And I got Marquette's, I got Lansing's, I got the paragon of civic virtue, the city of Detroit, and I also have the manual for Lansing, and then I got some small towns, the city of Charlotte, and the city of Hamtramck, Michigan. And what's interesting about this ordinance, when compared to all of them, is the language contained in this ordinance at section one. And it sets forth, it sets forth speech requirements for city commissioners, how they're to comport themselves. Well, none of these ordinances do that. And you may ask why, because there's another ordinance, it's called the United States Constitution, and there's a part of that ordinance called the First Amendment. And the problem is, is these type of requirements and ordinances, the way they're written, they're vague and they're overbroad. They're subject to constitutional attack in federal district court for First Amendment violations. Okay? The other thing, the other thing in this ordinance that's also contained in here is about false statements. A commission member shall not make false statements on which the commission, city staff, or other agencies rely to establish policy or make important decisions. This is a political body. Sometimes things are said, and there's a lot of tolerance for statements made. We don't, we don't work in a world, if it's political, you don't work in a world of precision, the type of precision that's required in courts. You don't have that here. So the, there's a couple, there's a couple of items in here that cause me worry, and it should cause you worry too, because I think the way that this is written, and, and the way, this is the first time for everybody, and I would really like to save everybody a lot of problems here, because I, I looked at the ordinance, I'm going, you know, depending on what happens, we, we have some hurt feelings here. I, I get it. But we still have the law, and, and the law is quite clear on these type of statutes where you prescribe what kind of language is to be used. The other thing is, is procedurally, I haven't even gotten to the procedure, but there's issues, and when you look at other ordinances, for example, the city of Lansing, the city of Detroit, Marquette, there's a whole procedure for hearings for ethics. And, and, and that's more of your due process constitutional sort of thing, and I, I have a problem with that. Now, so my, my big point here is, is I think everybody's intentions are good here, but I think legally there are some serious problems. This is fraught with problems. And at this point in time, I read the, I read the complaint here, and I'll bring up one more point before I do that, is the complaint and the materials, I read this, and I do not see this falling under the aegis of, of ethics. This is a business dispute. This is not somebody acting in official capacity. Arguably, the language, you know, there, there is a problem with the language. People disagree with it. You might not like it, but we still have the First Amendment. We don't, we don't necessarily have to agree. There's another issue here that has not been brought up, and I haven't seen it, but typically, if there's going to be some type of hearing, an administrative hearing, a trial or anything like that, you have to have a decision who has the burden of proof to go forward. This is somewhat Kafkaesque here. I mean, we're sitting here, we're accused, I mean, in a court of law, we, we don't have to prove anything. The burden shouldn't be upon us. And if you look at the sanctions here, I mean, this could be as serious as removal. This is not, you know, like a little trip in the park or a civics exercise here. So I would, I would just say there's all sorts of procedural problems here. Even, even if you tabled this tonight and came up with a different procedure, it's still going to have problems because of the language in the ordinance. And I, I go back to this. If you read, if you read the materials that have been submitted by everybody here, even taking into account that the complaint is not even first party, but it's based on some letters and things like that that are not subject to cross-examination, or at least notarization, it's a business dispute. And I would just ask that the board not entertain this, dismiss this. If you choose not to dismiss this, I think that we should be afforded the opportunity for a written response on every point with the assistance of counsel, and that also there'd be a particularized statement of facts and the applicable ordinances that are alleged to have been violated. I, I think it's only fair, and otherwise, no matter what turns out, there, there's other, there's other forms for resolving this matter. It shouldn't be here. There's no benefit that accrued to Ms. Baker, because if you look at these ethics ordinances, what are they all about? Conflict of interest, benefits, gifts, and all that. This ordinance is somewhat different because it has in their conduct. I can understand the concern, but all of these ordinances are about unethical benefits, bid rigging, price fixing, things like that. That's not here. So I would ask in conclusion that if you do not dismiss it, set this for a hearing under oath, subject to cross-examination, taken by a court reporter with exhibits.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker, you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jorgensen? Joanne?
Right.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Um. At the conclusion?
Well, I just want to ask a quick question right now before she starts talking.
Okay. You, you can ask a question.
Okay. So my question is this, is that being that we've heard from Mr. Dobias, if, can we give Ms. Jorgensen or Mr. Jorgensen, whoever is, is on the plaintiff's side at this point, can we postpone this and give them an opportunity to get an attorney to, before they respond? At this point?
No. I think she's, she's there to speak.
Make a motion to do that or not?
Oh. City Attorney?
Any motion made and seconded would need to be voted on.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you, I don't, I don't want to make a motion if it's not something you.
I would rather have an attorney.
Okay.
I'm not a public speaker. I'm very uncomfortable.
Well, then, I would like to make a motion to afford them the opportunity to get an attorney and come to the next meeting.
Support.
Was there a support?
Yes, support.
Okay. Any questions, comments? No, can't. Commissioner Gary?
So if we're following Mr. Dobias' recommendation, is this an actual hearing, and would we need the 10-day notice and, and all of the pertinences thereof, or are we?
Well, I think I mess that up if, so the thought, if.
Commissioner Collins, excuse me. It's not going to, it's not a discussion between the both of you. Are you asking a question? Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Okay. City Attorney?
Is this going to be considered a public hearing where they will bring witnesses and court reporter and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, according to the policy, or is this just bumping it so that they can have an opportunity to be as well-prepared with counsel to discuss this?
That's the process that we were, we were in.
Okay.
Okay.
That was my motion, though. My motion was to just bump it so that they have opportunity before we make a decision whether we do the next one.
Your motion is to table, correct?
Correct.
That'd be the motion then.
The motion would be to table to the next meeting.
The, the second, that has to go away, that motion? Would you be favored taking that away for a different motion? Commissioner Miller?
Well, I second it, but I'm under the impression that we're just stopping it right now and then starting up again, correct?
But I think I have to make a motion to take that motion off.
Okay. Commissioner Collins, excuse me. We'll, let me, we, okay, you, you get an opportunity, okay? You have to withdraw your second in order for that motion not to occur. Otherwise, you have to vote on that motion.
That's not true, Mr. Mayor. Motion to table has priority.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then we'll do what the city attorney says, okay? Again, doing what the city attorney says. So motion is to table. Is that your motion?
Yes, my motion is to table it, to allow them to get counsel.
So the Jorgensens can get an attorney?
Correct.
Okay. And we're in the same stage that we are in at this point. There no, have to be witnesses at this point, it's just whether, if the commission wants to go forward from the complaint. Okay? Everybody understand the motion? City clerk?
Can I get clarification? The motion is to table the agenda item to the next city commission meeting, moved by Commissioner Collins, supported by Commissioner.
Commissioner Miller?
Miller. Thank you.
Commissioner Gary, you have a question?
If I may ask the city attorney one question before we go on. The attorney, Mark Dobias, had said that if this is unlawful, it's legally fraught with problems. Is it your opinion that our ethics ordinance is lawful and will stand on its own?
At the time it was written, I believed it was lawful. Many things have changed in the past 11 years in the courts, but the only determination of whether the ordinance is lawful or not lawful must be made in the courts, so not this form. You certainly could decide you wanted to amend the ethics ordinance at some process in the future, or if it's challenged and the court tells you that parts or all of it are unconstitutional, you know, that would also cause you to revisit it. But this is the ordinance you have to work with at this time, and the procedures that we've laid out for you answer most, if not all, of Mr. Dobias' concerns. His major concern is the fact that the ordinance may be overly broad and infringe upon protections afforded under the First Amendment. That would be a court challenge.
Thank you.
Anyone else? A roll call, and the Commissioner Torre and Commissioner Baker will not be voting.
That is correct. They're conflicted out from this activity.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification, those that asked to speak on this agenda item.
Would be tabled at this point.
Until the next meeting. Thank you.
That is correct. The motion to table moves this to the next meeting.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Vospos?
No.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried. So this item is tabled. Tell the next, you bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you, the folks that want to, we'll have a slight pause for the folks that'd like to leave.
I'm trying. I just got there. I split my screen somehow.
Oops, I lost the, my agenda. We'll be right with you. Can I just? Okay. We're into the next item.
Item two under Communications is from Chippewa County Central Dispatch Director Michelle Robbins, Rave Alert System.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Thank you. Welcome up here, Ms. Robbins, to present on this topic. Thank you.
Hi, evening.
Evening.
Just wanted to give you a little background. My name is Messy Robbins. I'm the 911 Director and the Emergency Management Coordinator for Chippewa County. As the Emergency Management Coordinator, I'm part of a region, regional homeland security planning board with all the other coordinators in the U.P. We work on projects throughout the years to benefit the safety and security of our citizens here in the U.P. One of the projects we had a couple of years ago was the Rave Emergency Alert System. And what that is, it, it gives us the ability to notify citizens of an emergency. So with that, we can push out messages to landlines, we can send out severe weather warnings, and other, if there was an evacuation notice, we could send that out as well. So just a win for our rave system, on September 23rd, Central Dispatch received a 911 call about an 87-year-old male that had left his residence in the city of St. Marie. At the time of the call, the caller's wife said he had already been gone about an hour, and he was very frail, so they didn't think he would be very far from a home, from his home. He had, this was the second time that he had walked away from his house, and the last time he had only gotten a few blocks from home. At that time, I heard the dispatch send the city police to the residence, and I started to monitor the traffic. After about 30 minutes, he still hadn't been located by the police officers, so I decided to send out a rave emergency alert to the landlines. With that, what we can do is just put a radius of his address for a mile out, and we were able to send a message to about 1,500 landlines in probably 15 minutes. Because of those messages going out, we received a call from somebody over on James Terrace, which is about one and a half miles from the subject's residence, stating that she had him in his, in. had him in his, in her house at that time and was keeping him warm. So, just so you guys know, this stuff does work. I've passed around some flyers about Smart 911. Smart 911 is part of the rave system, and the difference between the rave system and Smart 911 is the rave only, we only have the ability to send it out to the landlines. For, for the residents that were signed up for the Smart 911, they also got a call on their cell phones and text messages. Seventy-five percent of our residents have cell phones, so we are trying to encourage people to sign up for Smart 911. There's, you can also put information about your family, if you have any special needs, your pets, your utility locations. That's all information that we can, the 911 dispatchers will have immediately when you call, not only from your landline, but from your cellphone as well. So, I just wanted to share the story with you about the, the missing subject. It had a good ending, thanks to our emergency alert system, and would encourage you and your friends and family to sign up for the Smart 911 system, so.
Question, can you sign up for this at any time?
Yep, you just go to the website.
Okay.
Yep, and there's an app, too. It just takes a few minutes, so.
And that'll be going forward, so you could do it now, you could do it a month, you could do it as, as people come onboard, you just add them to the system?
Yep, and they will, the system will actually get, send you a message every six months to make sure that your information is still valid and remind you to update it, so.
Excellent, have questions? Commissioner Talantino?
Thanks, Missy, great job. Quick question, we have some older folks in our community that may not have the internet, so can we do that for them?
Yep, you can, yep, your family member can do it for them. Also, what can happen is if you sign an elderly person up, then you can be put as a contact, so when they call 911, you'll also get a message that they called 911.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? City Manager?
I would just add that on top of this initiative, which I think it's a great innovation, the city has a number of partnerships with which we work with Ms. Robbins on, and it's always a great partnership, and certainly appreciate the diligence with which she approaches the job and...
Thank you.
Collaborations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and if anybody thinks of any questions, just feel free to get in touch with me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item three under Communications is from Stephanie Sabatine, discussion on rental registration procedures.
Okay. Evening, Steph.
I have to state my name for the record, Stephanie Sabatine, I know the routine. I'm, I'm here tonight to talk about a couple of different things. I was accused of starting a smear campaign against you guys, and that is so not true. I just want to make that point crystal clear, this is not a smear campaign against anyone. Several of you, I helped take around signs, I shared posts, talked to people about you, because I have a lot of experience with this city. I just want you to know that this is not a smear campaign, this is a justice campaign.
Continue.
I'm the one that's being smeared here, so, um, I put a lot of money into my building only to have Robert Brown go through it and pick it apart for crazy fines, and I, I want those fines removed. I got a letter today in the mail that says I'm going to get late fees if I don't start paying. It said I should contact Robert Brown. Well, I've tried to contact Robert Brown, he wanted a bulleted point list from me, so to facilitate an effective discussion. I think it was more like, I, I need to be prepared against you. But, um, you know, I tried to contact him, we can't see eye to eye, I guess, because I got passed around like a hot potato. Oliver Turner finally contacted me, and, and they want me to go to mediation. So, I'm willing to go to mediation to get this resolved, but I do want to make a point about your ordinances. This is a very antiquated ordinance. You have in this, you have with our rental registration, you have bundled in a certification. It's not self-certification, it's mandated, it's a mandated certification. Like Jim McLeod said at the last meeting that we were at, this is, um, it's, you're forced to lie. So, how can you come into my home, into my rental property, and pick apart my rental property based on these lies and then punish me for it? Really doesn't make any sense to me, I just think it's, it's ludicrous. I think if you want to maintain a rental registration list, I think that's fine, I think you should. But as far as this self-certification, that's, it's bundled in. We are, we are forced to sign, it's, it's not proactive, it's very reactive, it doesn't work. I'm, these fines are crazy. I've presented you guys with all of the literature that I had, I've invited everybody to come over to my house, haven't had any takers. So, I think I'm being ignored here, and I'm not very happy about it, you know? I, I've been to these meetings, I work all the time, I don't really have time to be here, I should be earning money to pay for my building. I put in a, a very expensive electrical system this summer. You can't do siding on your house until, at least I couldn't, I have a hundred and twenty-year-old house that has wires going up the side. I'm not going to go and spend twelve thousand dollars on siding when there's wires in the way, it makes no sense to me whatsoever. Also, uh, I have a problem with the process. Your enforcement officer, your code enforcement officer, according to your code, has the power to interpret any way he sees fit. I don't, I have a problem with that, because that means it's very subjective, I can be punished for speaking out, and I believe that's what's going on here, talk about your First Amendment, right? I have the right to freedom of speech without being punished. I, I just think that's crazy. I got a letter today in the mail, like I said, with late fees already. This is my third letter in two months for almost a thousand dollars in fines. Your thousand, your fine cap, too, I found out, is a thousand dollars. My bill's for nine fifty, I don't think that's a coincidence. I, like I said, I did try to communicate with Robert Brown based on the letter, I can't, I can't get a meeting with him. And I think that's really crazy, because the way, I, I FOIA'd the, the complaint log that my tenants gave him, he responded within a minute. And within that two weeks, he was, they were going back and forth like they were old friends. So, you know, I'm suspicious. When I contacted him, he waited in a day, he contacted me back the next day. So, I really don't think that, you know, that's fair either. The, the resources that I need, you, you guys are charging me for invalid fines. I'm disputing these fines, I can't get anybody to listen to me. I guess we're going to go to mediation on the ninth of October, so we'll find out then. And I don't believe that this is a process that's ever been, you know, in the works before. I just want to say, I'm not a slumlord, I'm a very responsible property owner. I resent the fact that I'm being defamed, that my character's being defamed, I don't think that's right. Robert Brown has come into my life, this is a pattern, it's starting to be a pattern, this happened in 2012, it's because I spoke out. It's not about the condition of my property, I really highly doubt that, because like I said, I've tried to make everybody know the condition of my property, I've invited you guys to my property, hadn't had any takers. I really don't believe that this is about the condition of my property. I'm a taxpayer and a citizen of this community, I just expect better. There is this piece of paper here, this is this reg, rental registration with the certification. It says, "All exterior surfaces and their respective treatments, roofing, siding, paint, varnish shall be maintained in good condition and free from deterioration. All siding and masonry shall be maintained weather-resistant and watertight. Metal surfaces subject to corrosion or oxidation shall be treated to prevent deterioration." Have any of you guys looked at Kane's Rink? Or the city fire hall? Because, you know, I have a brick building, too, some of my stuff is cracked. And I am going to file a report, because I think my, my house sits between two streets that were redid, redone two summers ago. There was severe shaking, I was upstairs painting in my second floor, in fact, Judy Hill, my good friend, was with me, we, we thought my building was going to cave in. So, I do need talk pointing from that. I will submit pictures and a statement with that, and I believe, I know that they took video before, so there is proof. Just this, this rental registration, here's another one. "Every occupant of a structure shall dispose of garbage in a clean and sanitary manner by placing it in an approved disposable container or facility." Are we supposed to police our buildings twenty-four seven? Is that what's expected here? Because I have a big dumpster, but I sometimes, I've found garbage in my hallway. And I, when I'm there, I tell my tenants, you guys got to, you can't have this, you got to clean it up. So, this, this, I have a problem with this, this piece of paper right here. And you guys had said you were going to set up a public meeting? Haven't heard a thing, when is that going to happen? I'm asking you a question.
When, when you're done, we'll answer that question.
Okay. I also want these fines to go away. I've explained myself in pretty good detail, I've provided you all with packets, and this is being ignored, and it's not right. You guys need to get rid of these fines. I can't even get a meeting to discuss them. So, um, in the letter here, it says that I should contact Robert Brown, well, I've contacted Robert Brown by email. Like I said, I, I've got referred to mediation, so I want to know, I have two questions that I want answered. I want these fines gone because they're invalid. I don't believe that I should be giving you guys money when you're charging me with, with improving my building, where do you, do you think I'm made of money? I don't have the government grants, I don't have the, I work three jobs, every dollar that goes into my building is earned by me. And I give up a lot of time to earn that money, I just don't think it's fair. And even if these fines were valid, I'm making forward progress. Are you punishing people that are making forward progress? It's not right.
Given, you have two questions, and the other one was the meeting.
Yeah, I want to know when the public meeting is, I want to know, I think the landlords need to be involved in this, because this is just, it's criminal. It takes away our, I'm being punished for freedom of speech, is what I'm being punished for. I'm not being punished for the condition of my property. There's lots of old buildings in this town, I've had a lot of electricians and contractors on my job site for the entire summer, and they all have complimented me on the condition of my building. My inside of my apartments are nice, I don't, wouldn't rent, I have a conscience, I'm not a slumlord, and I resent being called one. The exterior of my building is, it's a work in progress, it's, it's a huge building. The roof alone was forty-five square on a twelve-twelve pitch. So, you know, that's a lot of money, it's a lot of work, it's a big undertaking. I'm investing in this city, but I feel like I'm just not investing. I'll tell you what, if you guys want to buy my building, I'll sell it to you for a hundred and eighty thousand, and you can take it over, and then you can see how good of a job you can do with it. So, I have two questions that I want answered, I want my fines gone, and I want, I want to know when this meeting is going to be set up for the public, because we need to have this meeting, we need to have this discussion.
Okay. Are you, are you, have you concluded now?
Did I just fall on deaf ears, or? No questions?
You have two questions you're asking.
Yes, I want answers.
And time's up?
Oh, my time's up.
City Manager?
Okay, thank you for those questions. First question as to when a meeting with stakeholders or landlords would occur. At the last meeting on September seventeenth, the city commission approved the development of a public outreach strategy on the existing rental registration program and future alternatives that would be considered. So, right now, city administration's anticipating that methods for conducting that outreach strategy would be returned in two weeks to the city commission for consideration. So, as part of that strategy, we're taking a look at a number of different options, a survey, open houses, and the meeting with landlords and property owners and individuals who may wish to come to the meeting.
Are you going to notify us publicly, give us a good advance?
Certainly, public notice.
I would hope so.
Would be a big part of that.
They always are.
Now, what about my fines?
Uh, thank you, the fines, or the, excuse me, the fees, were assessed in accordance with the fee schedule, and it's my understanding that, as, as you know, we've discussed before, that existing structures Board of Appeals could review it, they may not be able to remove the fees. In the past, it's my understanding that they have determined that findings of violations have been removed, which would indirectly remove the fee. Alternatively, the city commission would be within its purview to remove the fees, but my understanding is that, that has not been done in the past, and it's been, the fees have been applied in a consistent manner with the over one hundred and twenty-four inspections of rental properties, which have been conducted since the program was established in 2012.
Okay, so it's never been done in the past, might want to try something new.
Well, that's what the, the administration, and we'll be working toward a totally new type of thing, where there could be possibly an inspection program, Andy. And going forward, we'll see where that goes, but there will be public input, there will be landlord input, there will be citizen input on all of that, and it'll be in the, it'll be transparent, it'll be advertised.
In the meantime...
In the meantime, those...
I have these fees, and I'm getting late fees now, on top of fees, and I think it's crazy to, I have to pay a hundred and twenty-dollar fine to go to the existing Board of Structures to get, I'm paying a fee to, to appeal fines? I mean, that's crazy, think about it.
The rental business is, is what it is in this community, there are a number of rental owners that, that...
That don't mouth off?
Do what they do, and I, you know, you've said many times that you may not stay in the rental business, I mean, that's a decision you have to make.
Is that what you want me to do, is get out of the rental business?
No, I'm just saying that, you know, if this commission doesn't want to move forward on, on releasing you from any fines, we haven't done it in a hundred and twenty-four different instances that, that people have been fined.
You know what, because people are afraid to speak out. You know what, this courtroom, this whole room would be packed, but there's people afraid to speak out, that's the one thing I've learned through this process, I think that's shame. You've got your constituents that are afraid.
Because people speak out all the time.
Not with this guy, they don't.
I'm not going to get into the discussion, which at this point, but I'm, I'm sorry, the, you don't like the fees?
No, because they're invalid. I'll tell you what, if those fines were valid, I would fix them, I would take care of it, no questions asked, but I wouldn't put myself in that position in the first place. This came about because tenants broke a lease, I'm not so sure they weren't coached, because Jeff Stefanski, that, that, they were coached, so.
Okay, thank you.
That it? All right.
Glenda, yeah. Hello, my name is Glenda King, nice to see you all again. Here we are again. And we're talking, and you're sitting there, and we don't get any answers. I just wanted to comment, because over the past few days, Steph Sabatine has been posting her violations on her web, on her Facebook page, it's open to the public, and I wish you people, the commission, the mayor, city attorney, city, city administration staff, I would hope that you will go to her website, and you will read her educational post on the issues that were cited, and I want you to read the comments. There are hundreds, hundreds of comments from residents of your city. And the one that really struck me, that I started with on May seventh, when I refused to register my rental property because of the conditions around my home, and because there were two unregistered rental properties next to me for years, and I was required to register my property, here's a comment that I really found interesting. I won't mention the name, because I don't want this person retaliated against. I don't get how slumlords, slumlords, because now we're all slumlords in this city, rental property owners, I don't really care for the label, but that's, seems to be, we're all thrown in the same boat now, we're slumlords. And the public gets it. I don't get how slumlords are supposed to keep their homes up to the city's regulations, but homeowners do not. I see so many homes that don't mow their grass, they don't fix peeling paint, crap all over their yard, broken windows, kids who sleep on floors, cars that don't run in driveways, but since they own the house, it's okay? Tell owners to keep their homes up the same way the rentals have to. By the way, love the leaded fan window. You see, you're singling out landlords, you're holding us to a different standard, and people know, people, residents realize, it isn't just the landlords, it's owner occupied, too. We need fair, uniform, proactive enforcement, because you are losing, you're residents of the city. Some people have higher standards, we don't want to see... We don't wanna see junk vehicles and garbage and dumpsters and peeling paint and falling off shingles. Okay?
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, um, this is obviously a, a big deal. And I can see the frustrations with, uh, the landlords. Again, we have a policy that, you know, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You have all these other people that aren't registering. They're rentals, and, and I'm, I think Robert's doing his job. I, I, I think he's doing what he's supposed to be doing. But until we get something that, a policy that's in place that is fair for across the board, maybe we should actually consider letting, I mean, 'cause I saw, one of them was for a leveled floor. Uh, one of the fines she got for a hundred dollars. I mean, these old, old buildings that we have in the Sioux, I mean, there's, I just, I feel like until we can get it together to where it's uniform and universal and it can cover the people, and also, we have something to seek out people that aren't registering their properties, um, as well. And then, again, I agree with the, the home thing too. So, um, just something to think about.
Okay, thank you. Uh, City Manager? Could you have Robert talk about the level four? Because I, I also agree that if it's the whole floor and it's an older home, maybe that, that oughta be something that is considered, especially in a home that, if it's not, if it's solid, but it happens to be not quite plumb? Or was it something else?
Uh, defer to Mr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to address real quick to clarify a comment that you made. There's a misconception about, uh, non-tracking unregistered rentals. If I'm called into a rental, I inspect. The fees apply whether it's registered or not. And additional fees are applied, up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, actually. So, there's a misconception when you say that. Even if you didn't register your rental, if I was called in, you would receive the fees. So, I just wanted to clarify, but.
Let's answer the question about, was it a, a separate?
Yes, it was. In this case, there were two issues. I was, uh, not allowed in the basement to verify, uh, the, the reason why the kitchen floor was sloping. But one of the reasons I was called in was the bathroom floor rotting. And the toilet actually falling through the floor, which is a violation. So, the combination of them both was, uh, the hundred-dollar fee added to it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
There was a rotting bathroom floor.
Commissioner Baker, do you have a question?
Yeah, and when I say the other, because when we're moving forward and we're planning these rental inspections to where they're going to possibly be every six months, like a health department inspection or whatnot, without having, with other people, that they just won't register their apartment then. And then, that's where I'm saying, we need to have a set policy that is across the board that covers all these different issues that we're gonna face. Otherwise, this is gonna continue to happen. And we've already, I'm not, I don't wanna say we wasted time, because this is an important matter, but we have lots of other stuff to be focused on, too.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Talantino?
All right. As everybody's aware of, I'm on the Community Improvement Board as long as, as along, as well with the City Manager and Commissioner Torri. I don't think there's anyone that sits around this horseshoe, so to speak, doesn't agree that we can improve the system. You know? It's not all black and white for me on old houses. I realize there's some gray matter there, but it's really tough for government to work in gray matter because of liability issues. You know, and we are working towards a system, but one thing I, a new system. But one thing I don't wanna do is I don't want this rushed. If it takes us eight months, ten months, twelve months to do a new system, that's fine with me. Because if we rush this through, I'm not putting my name on it. I made that very clear at the Community Improvement Board. You know, we need landlord or renter input, which you are going to get. Okay? We also need community input, non-rental owners. I want to talk to some homeowners about this as well. Okay? Because granted, the renters might be fifty-six-plus percent. There's still the other fifty-some percent, or forty-eight percent, whatever it may be, that I wanna talk to. And another thing that I would really like to talk with is insurance company. I want insurance company inputs. I wanna see what they're doing. Okay? I think this is gonna be a process. And then, once all of this is, is put together, I believe we'll come up with a system. It will come to us for a vote, and we'll take it from there. But like everything else that we do, some people are gonna like it, and some aren't. Okay? And, like I said, if it's not done, you know, it needs to be calculated and done slow and properly. If it's not, I'm not putting my name on it. I think we can do this. I think we can do this. And I think everybody here will agree with me on that.
Without a question, I think we want, if we're gonna change the system, and I think we're gonna change the system, it's gonna be a process, and it's gonna be something that we can all be proud of. And I, I think the insurance companies are very important. Because if you're trying to sell a home and you can't get insurance on it, then there's certainly some problems. And they'll, they'll make us regulate, because the, the, the homes have to be able to be insured. And we don't want that in their hands. We wanna be a little more proactive than that. But, um, so going forward, I'd like to, you know, we know we, we're going to be meeting with people and, and the community, and, uh, but, in the meantime, we have, um, are there people out there with fees other than Stephanie? Sabatina? That haven't paid? That?
I'm not aware. As soon as we bill, it's kind of out of our hands. That would be a better question for finance. I believe if they haven't been paid, they've been, um, special assessed on to the taxes by now.
Okay, let me ask you, the, the fees that she has on her rental property, and those are on primarily, all on Armory? And Kimball? Those are the fees that we were talking about?
Yes, one structure. Yep, the, the one structure on Cedar Street. That's correct.
And she's owned that for, since two thousand and twelve? Or longer?
Many years. I'm not certain of how many years.
Okay. And she, and she's been renting that facility out for at least that amount of time?
Yes.
And the condition that you saw in two thousand and twelve? Is it better now than it was in two thousand and twelve?
Again, when I inspected in two thousand and twelve, I inspected two other units per request of the tenants and the exterior. And the exterior findings in two thousand and eighteen were identical. So, nothing was completed on the exterior of the home. I was not back in the interior of the two units that I inspected in two thousand and twelve.
Okay. The interior of the home, is, are some of the fines there also?
There is. There's, uh, I'm, I'm pulling from memory here.
Yeah, I mean.
Illegal bedroom. Uh, there was a young lady staying in a bedroom with no windows. Uh, there was only one outlet in the bedroom, that was another violation. And, uh, extension cords running under the door into that bedroom, that's a violation. I believe broken windows, uh, unlevel floors, uh, non-functioning light fixtures. Uh, and other broken window, actually, that was another. Uh, counterweights in the legal bedroom. The, the window could not be opened easily or stay open.
Was there any, anyone in the basement?
I was not allowed in the basement.
Oh, okay, okay. So, the majority of the fine is on the exterior of the house?
Uh, both. I would say the exterior and the interior.
Okay.
The fees, yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Gary?
Just a quick question. When, when you go through and do an inspection and you, uh, note the violations, are they given a thirty-day timeframe to, uh, fix them before we assess the fine? Or the fines?
No, sir.
Automatically, okay? Because they were repeat due in several cases?
No, it is, uh, that's a, uh, system that, uh, the, uh, commission put in place for self-certification rather than mandatory inspections.
And on the violations that were repeats, was she fined for those in two thousand and twelve?
She was not fined for them in two thousand and twelve.
So, no fine at all, so it wasn't a deterrent then to, uh,
No.
Get the work done? It's probably worth noting, too, that, uh, 'cause I know the mayor was here and, and we've all talked about it, but the, uh, registration process that we have, it was the very least intrusive and the least cost possible for the landlords to not, um, disrupt and go to a full-born inspection process when we instituted it. So, I don't think there is any other process that we will come up with that will not have a more stringent, uh, process, which is probably good at this point in time.
Because there are some benefits to having a, um, inspection program like the rest of our peer communities do. Now, we can pattern however we want, and saying when we might inspect them, and, I mean, uh, several years out type of thing. And that's something we can design ourselves, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions of Robert? Doctor, Commissioner Torri?
Can you, can you just talk to us, just because we, Tim, Tim and I know from the Community Improvement Committee standpoint, but can you talk to us about how you deal with, um, blighted structures coming from the single-family homeownership to, um, rental property ownership? And why there's differences between the two that they're, how they're handled?
Certainly, that's a very good question. We do handle the, the owner occupied as we would a, a rental. That, uh, if we receive a complaint or a committee member notices violations or city staff on any structure within town, any, that's commercial, owner occupied, rental, whatever structure it is, if there's a property maintenance violation brought to our attention, it is brought to the committee. The committee will nominate the top ten generally. And, uh, then I'm charged with doing a formal inspection and, uh, requiring that that structure is brought into compliance, whether it's a rental, owner occupied, business, what have you. So, we've had, had handled many owner occupied homes through demolition or repair. Uh, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we're well over two hundred that, uh, we've completed.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you very much. City Manager? Anything else?
Uh, nothing further. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Item number G is the City Manager's report.
Item one, under the City Manager's report, would provide for the award of a construction contract for the reconstruction of West Eighth Avenue between Ryan and Meridian. On this matter, would again welcome City Engineer Basista.
Okay.
Evening again.
Evening.
On September eleventh, uh, the bids were open for the reconstruction of West Eighth Avenue between Ryan and Meridian. And three bids were received. Three bidders were Elmer's Crane and Dozer, Norris Contracting, and M and M Excavating. Uh, the bids were across the board, uh, very, uh, far apart. Uh, the low bidder, uh, was Elmer's Crane and Dozer. Uh, upon review of the bids and the bid tab, it was determined that the, the less responsive bidder was Elmer's Crane and Dozer in an amount of five-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars and sixty cents. And I would ask that you, um, approve a ward, uh, approve the City Manager to execute the contract with Elmer's Crane and Dozer. The, um, con, the project is scheduled to begin in the spring of two thousand and nineteen and, per the contract, be completed by July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Uh, thank you. Just a, I guess I have a question. When I look at the bids, and Elmer's is two-hundred-thousand less than Norris, who's local, and M and M, who's actually on the job doing one, uh, he's in town right now, right? M and M?
Yes, he is.
Can Elmer's do the job for five-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand? Or we're gonna have a lot of change orders?
It, nope. Uh, as you'll see, it's, uh, Elmer's, uh, bid is very close to the engineer, my, our estimate. And I can only expect that M and M, uh, in particular, would probably had some, uh, the labor dispute may have had something to do with their bid, uncertainty. I have not talked to Norris Contracting yet as to what constituted their higher than normal bid. But, um, it could be also the uncertainty with the labor dispute. But they're not, um, they're not, uh, a union shop. Uh, M and M is, and Elmer's is not a union shop. And so, Elmer's would not be impacted by the labor dispute.
And Elmer's has done work in the area before, right?
Yes, yes.
And you've been satisfied, we've been satisfied with that work?
Absolutely, yes. I have no, no question of Elmer's capabilities.
It's a great, it's a great price.
Yeah.
City Manager, you have anything else?
Uh, certainly appreciate the work of the engineering department on this project. Uh, something that we have discussed internally is that the original budget was six-hundred-thousand dollars. And through the hiring of a qualified staff engineer, uh, they were able to do the design in-house, keeping the project, uh, within budget.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we authorize the City Manager to execute a contract between Elmer's Crane and Dozer for the reconstruction of West Eighth Avenue between Ryan Avenue and Meridian Street in the amount of five-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars and, for some reason, sixty cents. Spart.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
That concludes the City Manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item number H is the Status Reports.
Thank you. The first item under Status Reports is an update regarding the request for proposals issued for the redevelopment of the former water pumping station. Uh, just an update, as commissioners are aware. Action was taken during the August sixth, sixth meeting to authorize the release of the RFP for, uh, the reuse of this facility. Uh, responses were requested by September, September seventeenth. With no responses being received, the city intends to leave the RFP on the city website to solicit further interest and would bring forth any proposals to the City Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the, okay? Next item.
Uh, thank you. The second item is an update regarding the extended October compost hours and leaf pickup. Uh, the schedule is posted on the city website and has been circulated more broadly. Uh, compost hours are being extended on Wednesdays through the rest of the month, either from seven AM to one PM or seven AM to seven PM. And then, on Saturday, uh, October sixth and the twentieth, from nine AM to one PM. And then, leaf pickup, uh, is looking to start during the week of October fifteenth. And we're encouraging everybody to please rake their piles of leaves at the curbside before seven AM on October fifteenth.
Okay, and when we say curbside, we mean on the grass and not in the roadway, because if we get rain, it blocks the, uh, drainage system. So, it's a lot, we mention that every, all the time, and we're still getting a lot of leaves on, on curbside, you know, on, on the street side of the curb. So, if you could, um, please just spread the word that, um, they can leave it on the grassy area. It works really fine and it doesn't interrupt the, the rainwater. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Torri?
I was just gonna say, maybe comment about, like, no yard debris, 'cause it clogs the machine. And we had some issues with that in the spring, with spring cleanup.
Okay. Yeah, just leaves only? I thought, did you mention that? No yard material, no, um, bag material, no brushing? That kinda thing? Branches? Okay?
Absolutely. Good point. And then, the third item is an update from Police Chief Riley regarding, uh, human trafficking. Police Chief, please.
Evening, Chief.
Evening, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. The City Manager asked me to, uh, address this, uh, due to a, an email that he, uh, the county administrator received and several other individuals. Mayor, I think you got the email as well. I read the email, and I, I would share the concern of the person that wrote it, not gonna identify the individual, uh, being a father. Yeah, I, I raised my kids are grown, but, you know, I had concerns when my kids were little. According to the email, there's been several rumors running around the area regarding human trafficking, kidnappings, attempted kidnappings, and how we're seeing a rash of these. I did take a look at it. What I did is I went back ten years and looked at our police reports. Uh, our police reports are headed under the FBI classification codes, and they have specific codes for kidnappings, abductions, human trafficking. They're all the same code. When officers take a report, and if it's related to any of those, that's what the report is headed under. That may change, once more information is received. But the original report is headed under attempted kidnapping or kidnapping. So, that creates our stats for reports, uh, for that purpose. Since two thousand and ten, we've had ten reports that fall under that classification. I brought up all of ten of those reports. I brought up all of 10 of those reports. And out of those 10, two were parental visitation issues. One was grandparents taking the grandchild without permission of the parents. Three were domestic violence matters. One, we assisted Wisconsin Police Department locating a couple of girls that voluntarily came over here with some guy that they were hanging around with, and they got a job at Walmart. And then we had the most recent one, which I believe started all the rumors and everything that's going around. We had a report of an attempted abduction of a 13-year-old boy in town. We quickly jumped on it, and it was resolved very quickly. Detective, detectives started knocking on doors, asking questions, ended up being a case of mistaken identity. Guy was driving down the street, saw a kid from the back that looked just like his nephew. And we actually saw pictures of this young man and the guy's nephew, couldn't tell them apart from the back. Thought it was his nephew, said, "Hey, get in the car." Kid turned around, he went, "Oh, it's not him." So, and, and the man just lived a street over. And so, he wasn't taken off and hiding or anything. It was a case of mistaken identity. But, for the purposes of notifying the public as a police department, we have to weigh, do we notify the public of something serious like this? Do we investigate it a little longer? We took a day or two and investigated it, but then I did a press release, 'cause we hadn't had a resolution yet, to make the public aware. Well, that opened the floodgates, and the rumors and Facebook and all the social media started. And again, I share the concern. We all warned our kids. Police Department still warns kids in town, Halloween, going to school. It's something we have to do. We have to make sure that our kids are safe. Of those 10 instances that I mentioned, we did have one attempted abduction of a three-year-old boy at Walmart. The suspect in that case had just finished huffing, and if you know what that is, it's inhaling paint fumes and whatever to get high. So, the suspect was completely out of it, attempted to abduct a three-year-old. Thank God, wasn't successful. You know, the boy was, they never made it out of the store. Person was arrested and charged. The other one was a kidnapping that you probably all heard in the news a couple of years ago from the gas station that was robbed. They took the clerk, and the only reason they took the clerk was so she couldn't call the police department. There was no intent in kidnapping. Dropped the clerk off, let it turn around, done by Ken Ross. And then he booked over to Canada, and he was arrested. We ultimately arrested him. We're not the only ones facing this. I don't know if you got it, you get the Detroit News or Free Press article from just a couple of weeks ago? Detroit Free Press, they questioned a lieutenant from the Michigan State Police in the Detroit area about the rash of kidnappings, attempted kidnappings and everything. And the lieutenant said that is, it's not going on. It's, it's all on social media and the rumors that there's a bunch of increases. And, and I believe you have, it's, it's just not real. It's based on fear, which is understandable. You know, if I, you know, anybody that has little kids worried about the kids getting to school and back and safely and everything. So, it's understandable, but it does create an issue for law enforcement with the public thinking, and for the city officials, public thinking that there's a rash of kidnappings, attempted abductions going on out there. It's just not the case. If it were, you probably wouldn't be hearing too much from me, because we'd be working the cases, and it'd be information that I wouldn't release, you know, if we had suspects developed and everything. So, I'm just here, the sheriff did the same thing at the county level. I'm just here to help set some minds at ease. We're not having a rash of these. We haven't had a rash of these, you know, I went back 10 years. So, that's pretty much it, if you have any questions.
Just remain vigilant, as in many things, you know.
I don't want my guys to get bored.
Yeah.
Looking for the criminals.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
City Manager?
That concludes the Status Report section. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. The item number I matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that can make a comment? Let's start with you, yes, Ms. Jones?
Thank you and good evening. I really do think I need to address the Commission, because this whole issue with, between Abby and Commissioner Twardy, started as a result of the Chippewa County Community Foundation wanting to do something good for our community by bringing the Sioux Ultimate Paddle Day. Our whole goal with the Sioux Ultimate Paddle Day was to attract people into our community. We wanted to bring outdoor enthusiasts, we wanted to bring paddlers, and we wanted to highlight what our community has to offer as far as our natural resources. And with that, we put together a committee, and we started to talk about, we did the first one last year, and we did our second one this year. I believe Mayor Vospas, you were there. Abby, you were there. Tim, you volunteered for it all day, and so you saw what kind of event that's become. This all started when we decided, when we were discussing whether or not to offer beer at our event, not to be like Kavanaugh, but everybody likes beer, right? And we, we have a committee. Abby is not part of the committee, but Abby was on our board at the time. We had, as a committee, decided that Short's Beer would bring the most to that event. It had the brand we wanted, Joe Short, who happens to be the founder of Short's Beer, and it's, it's a cult almost, agreed to come to it. That's why we chose to have the event. Abby did absolutely nothing, nothing, to persuade us one way or the other. She did not prevent a bidding process from taking place. All she did was make one contact to Short's Beer, it happened to be to Tim, their event manager, to see if they would be willing to come up and be part of our event here in the Sioux, and they agreed to it. Now, from that, I got a call from John Jorgensen, Jr. He has a reputation of being a bully. Everybody knows that. That is not something new. He called me up, and he started to yell at me because we were using Short's Beer and we weren't using Marquette's Distributing. Now, I tried to explain to him the reason why we were using Short's Beer. It had nothing to do with whether we use local vendors or not. We spend a lot of money in the community. We, when we can, as the community foundation, we shop local, we do everything local. This just happened to be a way to make our event better. He, and he yelled at me. He didn't give me a chance to even say two words. We had every plan. We were planning on using Marquette's Distributing for things like maybe Mike's Hard Lemonade or some domestic beer. And when I tried to explain that to him, all he said to me was, "I'm not playing your game, Debbie." And to that, I said, "Thank you and goodbye." It had nothing, nothing to do with Abby. The reason we did not use Marquette's was because of how he treated me. And, and I'm not the only one that's been treated that way, and you guys know that. You know the reputation. This is not something new. And you really want to drag your City Commission through this? Because you know that Abby has a tremendous, tremendous following in our community and a tremendous amount of support. And if you do this, if you go through with this, it's gonna rip your Commission apart, and our town's gonna be very upset. And you may find it also that it's illegal. Now, I know just about every one of you personally, and I know things about you. I know that there's another Commissioner sitting in this U right now who has contacted a city employee to try to use her influence to stop events happening at the farmer's market. Don't, no, it's true. It's true. I'm on the DDA. I am a DDA Board Member, okay? And because of that, I made aware of situations, and I made aware of complaints. Now, I don't want this to be comma, he said, she said, but let me think about this, you guys. When you have your after-meeting in the basement at the CC Hall tonight, aren't you guys discuss?
We, we do not discuss city business.
I know you don't, but I know you also go down there. You all go down there. I know that there's been some fingers that have popped up at that meeting. And you guys, don't look at me like you don't know what I'm talking about, 'cause you do know what I'm talking about. And you don't want your Commission drug through the mud.
Thank you for your comments, Deb. The time's up.
You're welcome, you're welcome, but...
Thank you.
Don't, don't do it to our town. You'll be sorry.
Anyone else?
I want to add something to what Commissioner Talantino said. I have a very comprehensive insurance report. I just ordered it, and I got a copy of it. And my insurance company won't insure me if my building's not safe. And I, I disagree with Robert Brown's comments that my exterior is the same. My interior is, is nice. It takes time to fix this stuff up. I know you guys aren't in the rental business, rehab business, but I've been for about 30 years, and it takes a long time. Takes a lot of money. You're at the mercy of the unknown, 'cause you don't know what you're gonna find when you start ripping stuff apart. You're at the mercy of contractors. I would have had of, I would have had both my electrical and my siding done this year had it, I bet on the schedule. It's not anything I can control. I just spent $15,000 on a new electrical upgrade. I got rid of six meters, put in a 400 amp service, and it's almost done. But my insurance company, I just got a comprehensive insurance inspection. My property's a commercial property, it has six apartments in it. So, it's not a duplex or a single-family home or anything like that. We're talking, when you fix something up, it's tenfold. I put all new windows in my building. How much you think that cost? Anybody take a guess? About $5,000. So, had to replace all the windows, that was, was not an inexpensive thing. And as far as a two-bedroom goes, that used to be a boarding house, I'm pretty sure. The rooms are pretty choppy. I've had tenants switch rooms around. I don't govern my tenants like that. In fact, I don't specify in my lease agreement whether it's a one-bedroom or two-bedroom or any of that. It's kind of based on the square footage. I've had tenants set up a bedroom and a living room. I'm not gonna go in and bother them, that's their business. My house is safe. The insurance company has a lot more to lose than you guys do, so I guarantee that, you know, my house is safe, it's not unhealthy in any way, and that's what we're talking about. I got a hundred-dollar fine for a hole, it's like a three-inch hole in my siding. This is grasping, it really is. He's just picking stuff to fine me out. And he's got the ammo to do it with that stupid certification. Makes no sense at all to me. So, I've got insurance. My, my building has been upgraded on the interior, on the exterior, and the tenants don't live on the exterior. There's a hole in the basement window, yeah, but there's a cage over it, some kind of a screen. I didn't put the hole there. I think probably my groundskeeper did, or snowplow guy did, maybe, actually blows snow, so it could have happened then. But, you know, there's a crack in the front of City Hall. I can show you guys where it is. You guys are subject to that same property code, I do believe. So, I just want to put that out there, that my insurance inspection was comprehensive, I've been insured. And as far as me owning the building, I've owned it for 25 years. I bought it October 1, 1993, not in 2012. So, Jeff's, that whole deal with Jeff Stefanski was ridiculous, and everybody knows it. But, as far as that goes, my house is insurable, it has been every year. I get a comprehensive insurance inspection. It's got a brand-new service on it, on the outside. I just, I'm gonna have to have the front driveway excavated again, because they dug up a bunch of black dirt, and I just gotta put filter cloth in there and bring in gravel. There's another $1,000. So, I need that money to fix my building up. You guys are charging me with fixing up my building, and you're taking away my resources to do that. It's not very, it just doesn't even make sense. So, and I did check out some of the other peer, of our peer cities. Those inspections are done by the fire department in Marquette. Potaski doesn't even have one. And I'm gonna explore those a little bit more in-depth, too, because I think that, I think that, you know, it just, this is just crazy. It's driving me nuts. I hate it. It's wrong.
Thank you.
Glenda King, I just have a couple of quick items. Number one, I have a question. Amongst your discussion about that meeting, you were talking about rental licensing. And if that's what you're planning, I think you should notify rental property owners as soon as possible, so we can make our financial decisions accordingly. We need to plan for the future. Okay. So, can you answer that? Is there going to be a rental licensing program? Because that's what I just gathered from your conversation about your meetings.
You mean a rental inspection program?
A rental inspection.
Don't know till we get there, but if we do, there'll be time to...
But it seems you're moving in that direction. So, I will make my financial decisions upon that. And I hope people are watching, and it's something to consider, because there's gonna be a lot of cost for landlords. Second, on September 4th, I attended the meeting, and we discussed a property that was located next door to me that I complained about in 2010, and I never received an answer for it for eight years. And I asked to be informed of the progress of that complaint. I never was. At September 4th meeting, Robert Brown stood here and told you that I was insubordinate in my job, I should have notified him, I only worked yards down the hall. He said a lot of untruths, and I have never been able to defend myself. I want to be heard. When you accuse somebody of things such as that, then I think it is my right to be able to respond to those allegations, and I want to be heard. And there are things that I can't say at this podium that I would like to say. I want to be heard by the Commissioners in private. I want you to talk to me. I want to face my accuser. Robert Brown, you are here this evening. You are welcome. I, I welcome Robert to be there. I want to be heard. So, I want an answer on that, and I'll wait about a week. I want an answer. I want to be heard. I have a lot to say, and I want to defend myself. I've never been allowed to defend myself. I've been accused of a lot of things. I want to defend myself, and that is my right. We live in the United States of America, we have a Constitution, and my rights have been trampled on, and I want to be heard. I look forward to hearing you, from you on that. I would like you to respond. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? City, if you could say your name for the...
Yeah, I'm Honey Liz Cindy.
Thank you.
I've never been to a Commission meeting before.
Last name?
Lee. I hate to give you my last name, 'cause what I'm hearing tonight, it doesn't sound very good. But, I've never been to a meeting before, and I came tonight because of the things that I've been hearing. I'm not used to speaking in front of people. But I guess my, my thinking is, is why if everybody's gonna have to go by the same rules, whether you're a homeowner, whether you're a landlord, whatever, if everybody's gonna go by the same rules, then if I see something in somebody's house that doesn't look proper, like old cars, old junk cars, they talked about that tonight. So, then I might be upset about that, so then I'm supposed to call somebody and say, you know, they shouldn't have junk in their yard, or if their grass isn't cut? I mean, who determines when these fines come out? And who says, "Well, this needs to be fixed"? I mean, does somebody drive around? Does Mr. Brown drive around and look at the houses? 'Cause it's not just landlords. You know, I've lived in the city most of my life, and I own property here, I own property in Brimley, and I see the same thing in Brimley. My mother-in-law lives out there. She has a house that's next to hers. The guy has not lived in the house for three years. The grass is as high as the windows. And it's on the main street, and nobody does anything about it. So, I guess my question is, who determines when people are wrong? Is it somebody calls up because maybe they're upset at their neighbor, and the neighbor left the garbage out, so they're gonna call Mr. Brown? He's gonna come over, and they're gonna get, you know, that's...
The city manager will answer. If you're all done, then you can go ahead and sit.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for that question. That's a great question. It's a question that the city receives a lot. It's my understanding that Robert Brown drives, the city drives each street about once a week. There is a proactive element of determining whether it's a junk vehicle, or if it's junk and debris, or if it's a blighted property, which is referred to the Community Improvement Committee. So there is one component of inspecting properties from, at least from the public right-of-way. And then the second component, there are citizen concerns and complaints which are received by the city, which are referred to for further follow-up as well. So there's a combination between citizen concerns and the proactive research and investigation.
If she has a complaint, she would talk, she would call the, where?
Certainly. If there's a complaint, certainly able to refer that to Mr. Brown in the ordinance enforcement office position, or you could refer it to my office as well.
I guess what I'm saying is, if somebody's upset with me, and they think that I'm leaving my garbage can out too long, can they call him and have him come and look at it? I mean, you know, if we're talking about, there's a lot of emotions that are going on in this room tonight.
Yeah.
You know? And I see where they're coming from, and I see where you're coming from, because there are rules. And I mean, that's just part of living in the United States. Everybody has rules. But what I'm saying is, it needs to be fair for everybody. And if somebody's got something out for somebody, not sure that that's happening, I don't know, because I don't know the whole story. I don't know all the situation. But what I'm saying is, people can be very nasty if they want to be. And if somebody doesn't like somebody for some reason, you know, is this a way to get them in trouble? That's what I'm saying.
Understand. Understand, Cindy. Thank you. Thank you for coming, too. And that happens, and I think, maybe, let me speak for, if two neighbors are having a problem, and one neighbor starts calling the city, the city will find out in a hurry, because they're going to talk to the neighbor. I mean, they're going to talk to the person, and then they're going to find out that they're having a spat, and then you've got to determine what's real and what's not real. So, he probably does that every day, type of thing. Okay?
Can I just say something to that?
Sure.
Okay. So, you just said, so, one neighbor, you know, they call on the neighbor, and then there's a spat, and then they feud, and then we find out the real story. Well, if you had proactive enforcement, then the neighbors don't have to complain about each other, and then there's not the dispute between the neighbors, because when you live in the neighborhood, does everybody want to, I mean, there's all kinds of people in the neighborhood, so why do we have to complain about our neighbors? When you have code enforcement that was hired in proactively, then go out and proactively find them.
Understand, but sometimes, and sometimes neighbors just have a problem, and they'll find a way to make your life miserable, I think is what Cindy's saying, so that they can, and that's what she's saying.
And sometimes neighbors don't even want to risk having a problem with the neighbors, so they live with it for years, like me.
That happens, too.
And there are many others like me. So, just a suggestion, you know? Proactive would be good.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. City Commission? Commissioner Torri.
Actually, I just wanted to say thank you to Mary Jo Duval and to Linda Hoath, and also to Justin Nepper for putting on the Sioux International Festival of Races on Saturday morning. I thought it was, I don't know how well the attendance was, because I haven't run it in a few years, but I decided late on Friday night that I would, that I would get up early the next morning and go register. Everything from registration to how they cleared the streets, cleared the bridge, so that bridge traffic could resume as quickly as possible. I just thought that it was really, really well organized, and even though it was kind of cold, it was still a great event, and it was great to see so many people out running our bridge.
Yes, and there was, I think, over four hundred people, and they started at seven o'clock. We did a welcome there, and Commissioner Torri was there. They had three intervals, a lot of people. Each year, it seems to be getting bigger and bigger, and certainly the volunteer, again, the volunteer people that continue to make that happen and make many things happening. Linda Hoath is saying, next year is another peak year in the city. She's got a number of things coming to the city. Boat, you know, fishermen, antique motorcycles, but she can give us a report going forward, because she's got it at her fingertips, and I certainly don't. But we look for another banner year in the city of Sioux St. Marie, 2019. So, again, thanks to all those volunteers. Thanks. Anyone else? Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I got a few things here. In regards to this whole ethics issue with me...
Excuse me. If Commissioner Baker wants to talk, does she have to go to the other podium, or can she speak from where she is? Just a procedure.
Right now, it's the comments by Commissioner section, and I have no idea what she's going to say, so I can't answer your question.
So, what I'm going to say is, first and foremost, I'm very disappointed that this has taken this long to get taken care of, and it's still going on. It should have been taken care of back in August when it was first supplied, but again, we, as a city, we're not up to date with our boards and ethics. It hadn't met in eleven years. Now, a week after my grandmother dies, now I have two more weeks that I have to deal with this. I was advised to bring an attorney by the city attorney, which is what I did. I have not been questioned or brought in by the Ethics Board for any of the responses. I suggest we, as a commission, really look at this policy when this is all said and done, to protect us further, because anybody can come without any burden of proof with stalking allegations. And that's just like, Greg's the financial advisor. Somebody gets upset because he does a bad deal, they can come and do that, and then he'd have to hire an attorney and go through three months of what I've been going through.
I agree.
And I do not think it's fair the way I've been treated. I'm very disappointed on so many different levels after the work that I've tried to accomplish here, and I've done nothing but be positive. I don't want to portray the city in a negative light. However, this whole process, the piece, the process, the policy, the procedure, in this whole instance, is completely biased and unfair. And just for the record, and all those things that were alligated against me, not one is city-related. The Community Foundation is not a city-affiliated entity. Maloney's is not a city-affiliated entity. None. You all have the background information. You have the letter from Justin Nepper. You have the letter from the Community Foundation. You also received a letter from Kathy Howell at the Wicked Sister today. You all got that, and yet, we have to do this two more weeks out. I cannot believe it. I am disappointed in all of you, except for the mayor. Thank you for, I just, it just, it makes no sense how, with all these other issues that we have going on in the Sioux, that the city attorney, the city manager, myself, have wasted hours of time. My mother is worried. My grandmother was worried before she passed about it. This is an utter, it's making a mockery and a joke out of all of us sitting here. Thank you.
Who else? Commissioner Gary?
I just wondered, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to mention the event today?
Oh, sure. The governor, outgoing governor, but Governor Schneider, certainly a very nice man, was here in the Sioux, and we were happy to host him, and it was nice that he came back for the three-hundred-and-fiftieth. Very nice. Commissioner Miller?
The thing I took away from his speech was the end when he talked about civility.
And that was something, wasn't it?
And civil to each other.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah. Yeah. I thought...
He, no, he...
I agree.
Mentioned that for the last part of the speech, and I think we should all remember that.
Yeah. We need a motion to adjourn.
So move. We adjourn this meeting.
Support? All who are in favor, say a "aye" by saying "aye."
Aye.
Both same sign?